As efficient and as effective as we possibly can and we feel good to have the state efficiency review validate the work that we do. So I just put a little quote from that report in here, so, in terms of making sure that we continue to keep our best practices going and continue to have a continuous service improvement. One of the things that I added in here, and as I said, we've continued to have high customer satisfaction and high efficiency reviews and having high availability of our networks and systems. I also put in here for your benefit, a number of the initiatives that we've had going on this year. We've had a number of updates and enhancements to systems that we've put out. The access for all community is what I was talking about in terms of continuing to look at options for digital divide. We did have a first phase of our Lawson upgrade, and this is an upgrade that we did to our human resources system because of the discontinuation of the SAP HR module in terms of the county has decided, you know, elected not to move forward with the HR component, so we've had to upgrade our aging HR system. We've done, we finished the first phase, we will continue to the next phases of that upgrade. We also have added significant capabilities to our dashboard systems, one of which being our at-risk system that we are, that our high schools are using now to identify kids at risk, and that's taking a look at grades, attendance, test scores, a variety of different tools that our, that our schools are able to use to sort of look at target lists of students that are at risk for not graduating or at risk for not being successful. So that's been a big addition to our EDSL data system and dashboard that went out this year that's been going out to our high schools. And really has had some, we're already starting to see some significant use of that application to help identify those kids at risk before it's too late. We also have rolled out ISIS, our new student information system. We've, you know, the elementary schools are fully completed and the middle schools, we had a large number that went live over the winter break, and that's continuing to be rolled out. We've had a number of other on upgrades. We had upgrades to our special education system, to our identity management system, which is really what we link in terms of our active directory and those kind of things where we make it easier for people to log into our applications. We've also had a major upgrade to Blackboard. In addition to that, we've implemented the first phase of the teacher evaluation system in partnership with Human Resources and Professional Learning and Accountability. We did roll out our new FCPS mobile app this year, which has been popular with our parents and having easy access as you've, as those of you who have used it, to the school directories and having our alerts and things like that for school closings and whatnot. We do have planned, in March, we'll be rolling out in conjunction with Food and Nutrition Services, the new nutrition system. That'll be a new module to our FCS, FCPS mobile app. Right now, we have the menus, lunch menus, but we'll be adding nutritional information about those lunch menus. We'll be coming in, in March as part of the National Nutrition Month. Some additional enhancements we did to keep in touch system. We now have the ability and Transportation has the ability to directly send out keep in touch messages for specific bus routes, which has been a nice thing. So if we have buses that are late and those kind of things or having a difficulty, we can target the keep in touch just to those specific transportation routes, which is a nice, nice enhancement. In addition to the business partnerships, we did roll out a new application for, with Jay Grant to help do matches, it's sort of like a match.com for business partnerships. So that's a new application that was rolled out. We continue to, as I mentioned, have a number of these applications and these systems that will be continued next year. I also provided for you, because in the section under, under budget and issues and trends, I did provide you with some details about the budget cuts that are part of the IT. We are now on page, one second. Twenty-eight. Provided you, we've had some questions about specific things in the technology budget cuts. We'll be cutting, in the superintendent's proposed budget is about $4 million of cuts in the technology, and I just wanted to give you some highlights of what those cuts entail. We are, and I would tell you, overall, we tried to do things that would minimize the impact on classrooms, and so many of these cuts are focused on more of the administrative areas and what you might consider, you know, nice to have. So one of the things, like, for example, Ryan had asked questions about our cuts in multimedia. In the area in cuts of multimedia, specifically Channel 21, we've cut a number of the, we've cut our Spotlight on Learning videos, we've cut about half of our public information news hour videos. We've also cut the graphics, we eliminated a graphics designer, and part of that work that that person does is a lot of the graphics for our, our conferences, such as Leadership Conference, some of the, like, the Education Conference. So those kind of graphics that were, that are supported from signage to programs to video support, the things that are really done in conjunction with our departments. Again, the kinds of things that are still in the budget that we did not cut are things that are specifically for teachers and classrooms. So, for example, the online learning, which is a very big part of what we do with multimedia, to make sure that those things that we can do online to help reduce the number of teachers that have to be pulled out of the classroom for, for professional development, we're moving a lot of that to online. So those are the kind of things that we prioritize of keeping our multimedia services focused on classrooms and teaching and teachers rather than on conferences and leadership conference and those kinds of things. We've also cut back on a number, we've basically eliminated our face-to-face IT training, so things like Microsoft, Adobe, those kinds of training that we have. Now, the things that are available online, we have eliminated the face-to-face training opportunities for those things. And that's in conjunction with our overall strategy of trying to, you know, keep things moving and, and moving forward, but not doing as much face-to-face as we can, again, taking people out, less, less out of the classroom. We have had to make some cuts in terms of our infrastructure. Again, a lot of these things are in the refresh category, so we're trying to sort of keep things maintenance mode, but we're going to be doing less of our refresh, which you can do that for a little while, but if you do that for too long, you start having some pretty significant impacts on your uptime and those kind of things in terms of infrastructure, also in terms of computer refresh, those kinds of things. You can, we've, and we've had to do some of that in the last few years as budgets have been tight. We do have a number of positions that are being cut. Again, one of the things that we also have cut back on is our, in the software development area, for example, in eCart, we've kept eCart application maintained, but we have eliminated the work that we do to make enhancements for that application. One of the things I also mentioned, didn't mention in terms of our new initiative this year, we just rolled out a new search engine or search capability in eCart, which has been great. Teachers are loving that, that they can search for lesson plans and those kind of things by, by curricular area that's been very popular. So those kind of things, we will be sort of maintaining, but not be enhancing next year, and that's the case sort of across the board with a lot of our software applications. So that's the kind of things that we've cut in the budget, trying to keep things that we have going, but will be cutting back in terms of being able to do our, sort of like what you think of as R and D in those areas. So that's the very big, that's the highlights of what we have, and I will turn it back over to Mrs. Strauss.
Thank you very much. Questions? Okay. Patty, Ms. Reed is the first customer?
Thank you. Ms. Loveglass, your presentation was perfect. It hit the highlights, and your materials are very detailed and very informative, so thank you, as always, just an excellent report. I do have a couple of comments, and I did let you know about those. And these may be too big to give a quick answer, but I wanted to kind of get them out there as kind of high-level issues of concern. One, of course, is the digital divide that you've mentioned, but in particular, as it relates to the achievement gap. I feel like there's more work that we could do there and probably should do there to determine, you know, how we can best use technology to reduce those gaps, particularly starting at the young ages. For example, could we give our, our at-risk kids in the early grades a computer all the way through, or something like this? I don't know, I just feel like we're in need of a strategy now that kind of pulls from various departments and functions. Maybe it's special services, maybe it's instructional services in UNE, and maybe it's MSAOC or somebody to come up with a strategy for how can we use technology to reduce those achievement gaps. So that's one thing I wanted to mention. And the libraries, you mentioned that, and I just feel, I continue to feel that those are an untapped resource, and I know that most of them have like a one limit, one-hour limit. When I go in there, I always see, they're, they're very populated with people, but for students, you know, that may not be adequate for them. So that's maybe another area to look at, to see how we can maximize, or even have a library open, limited hours on a Sunday, for some of these kids to go in and be able to do their homework. That might raise issues with the public, but I guess what I'm saying is I feel like there's more thought that perhaps could be done around that. Continuing, I wondered if you have looked at the correlation between student achievement and the use of various technologies that are in your report, you know, Blackboard and, you know, the various things? Because I'd be curious, as I started looking at some of the school data in your appendix, yes, I did get all the way to the appendix, and saw the huge variation among schools in the use of various tools that you offer. And I guess I wonder, in the end, have we really dug deep to determine if we have to make adjustments to the way we do business, which of those technology tools, in fact, are most related to student achievement? Have we done that, Dr. Garza? No?
Not specifically. Again, we, you know, we can, we can work, and the other thing about it in terms of the providing access to kids, one of the things that we've been really focused on is BYOD for those kids that do have access, so that we can free up some of our equipment that we have for that checkout program. One of the nice things about, and we have had some discussions with the library program. Actually, we have our, our new library coordinators here from Instructional Services with us today. But we have done some work with, with the county libraries in terms of if they can bring in their own, if they can bring in the checkout devices, they can get the free Wi-Fi in the public libraries. So they don't necessarily have to utilize the, the one-hour, you're right, because they're so popular in terms of the labs and the, in the libraries, that our equipment that we do check out is Wi-Fi capable, and so they can tap into the public library Wi-Fi system, which helps. But again, if, one of the purposes of bringing BYOD is that we can then free up some of the equipment that we own to do is that checkout program through the library program, so that's one of the things.
Right, right. Sounds like that's working.
To your point, Ms. Reed, this may be a little too broad, my answer to this, but this, I think your comments relate to, overall, the, the autonomy that exists with regard to instructional decision-making, and how our programs vary from school to school based upon, you know, the leadership at the campus level. I think this, when we get to more clearly defining our, our reading programs, for example, which is, I think, a major piece of work that we have ahead as it relates to the achievement gap, I think you'll see more consistency with regard to how we're using technology to support learning. For example, a lot of school systems have adaptive software that are available at the school level to support reading instruction, and it's used consistently across the system. So I think moving forward, I think we've got to strive to having much more consistency with the application of tools and resources that we know make a difference, and ensuring that that happens from one campus to the other.
Yeah, that's terrific, and I'll try to finish up. I know others have things to say. Regarding the libraries, though, I also wonder about our own libraries and whether we can maximize the use of them. When I wander through the schools, often, you know, they're pretty empty, and that's during the day, but, so I feel like that's an untapped resource also, and maybe, I don't know, could we open them up after school or on weekends? And there's tons of computers just sitting there, I don't know.
There are, there are some schools that open their libraries, but again, it's not consistent, so we could certainly look into that in terms of working with our library services and seeing if that's something we could potentially look at.
Great. And last but not least, then, is the issue of high-impact learning technologies. Walt Carlson had sent some materials that I think we've all received. He's my constituent, and he's, of course, very thoughtful about these issues, strategic technology as it relates to education. So I guess I wonder, as we go forward and we face these budget constraints, how can we go about making decisions? And it kind of relates to what we're just talking about, how do we use technology to really maximize achievement? And he went so far as suggesting an independent review of our organization, and, you know, and that's nothing personal, I think, but it's this idea of, you know, looking at things maybe from a different perspective now and saying, okay, and in fact, there's, the Office of Science and Technology Policy is asking for input right now. I mean, so again, if we want to be advocates and make a difference, here's yet another area where I think we can step up as a leader and say, okay, you know, we're willing to brainstorm, or we have ideas, or maybe there's even some resources tied to it, I don't know. But again, I guess I'm very concerned, and I appreciate and agree with the, the cuts that you're suggesting based upon, you know, what we think our budget will be, but, you know, I think that the day will come when we're going to have to make some even more serious choices, and that all of these comments, I think, relate to what really works for student achievement regarding technology. So again, thank you very much. I know these are, there's really not a one-word answer you can give to what I've just laid out, but again, appreciate your thoughtfulness very much. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comment? No? Okay.
Well, I was, a lot of these things in terms of the, the technology and learning is really part of, also part of Goal One in terms of looking at our technology and integrating instruction. So I think it's a partnership that we work with, with Instructional Services on what are the best tools and what are the best ways to make sure that the, the technology is integrated. As Dr. Garza said, as part of Portrait of the Graduate, I think we're going to be able to look at how we are prioritizing and make sure we are using the best tools that we can. Really, the only thing that we actually really mandate for all teachers, and that's our Blackboard, you know, and even within that, trying to get the consistency. So it's continuing opportunities to try to, to try to improve in getting that consistency across schools.
Thank you. Mr. Moon?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions, and they are somewhat related with each other. First one has to do with extent of utilization of technology capability by our instructional staff and other supporting staff by that. You know, we provide, you know, a lot of technology tools for our AIA teachers and other, you know, even the supporting projects to use, you know, doing their jobs, and whether, whether we capture, we probably do not, whether, whether it's easy to capture the extent of utilization.
We do, you know, part of, in your attachment is, for those systems that we can track, for example, the use of Blackboard, the use of, you know, a lot of these tools, we do track in detail, and we, we provide you school-by-school data, but we could, but the, the schools have access to the individual data in terms of utilization of the different tools. And we also, we do that, that's, this is sort of systematic data, and then we also have the survey data that we provide, that we issue out to, every year, to our teachers to get their feedback. And so we have very high percentage of teachers that report that they're utilizing this instructional technology weekly or daily. So we kind of use that, the combination of those things from survey data and actual statistical data from our systems to give us that, to give us that feedback.
And I'm more interested in whether they are using it to its, you know, close to the maximum capacity.
And I think that you will find that is, it does vary. Some teachers utilize it extensively, and some teachers utilize it to the, you know, the minimum, they certainly use it for email and those kind, you know, Blackboard and those kinds of things. So it does, it does vary, and so we have, as you know, a school-based technology specialist in each of our schools who's really focuses to help our teachers integrate the technology into the curriculum and to help maximize the use of that, use of that technology. And we provide feedback to our, to our schools in terms of the utilization, and then they can utilize that to work with the individual teachers on additional training and professional development to help them continue to increase that, that usage.
My next question is, really related, somewhat related to the first one, as I alluded at the beginning. Has to do with lever, providing technology to our staff, whether it's, it's an appropriate lever or is somewhat, you know, I'm going to give you a, my smartphone as an example. My father does not have a smartphone, and I ask him about whether he wants to have a smartphone, and he says, no. You know, Dad, I'm going, I'm willing to buy you one. So he says, no. The cellphone that I, the only use that I have with my cellphone is to receive a phone call and make a phone call, nothing else. So I don't need a smartphone. For me, I have a smartphone, but when my son looks at how I use my smartphone, you know, from his perspective, I'm not making a best to use my smartphone. I'm not using it to my, it's a maximum capacity. Whether something like that is being looked at for the school system.
I mean, I would not say that there's been a detailed analysis. I don't think we necessarily have the resources to look at, you know, all 30,000 employees and exactly how they're utilizing them, but we do provide all of our teachers with a laptop. That's basically, that's of all, that's really our priority when we do have our refresh and those kind of things. And we provide them with a laptop so they have the full capacity of being able to develop curricular areas, being able to, we do not provide our teachers with smartphones, just primarily because of the resources. We don't have the resources to do that. But we, we have done our very best to try to keep their teacher laptops in a five-year refresh, more than, that's been our priority with, with the limited refresh money that we've had, has been trying to keep them. And they have to be able to get into everything from checking their, you know, their, their paycheck information to their instructional, instructional programs, and right now, that's really been our top priority. But we haven't had the luxury of being able to provide all of our teachers with smartphones or iPads. Some of our schools have provided some additional resources to our teachers, but in general, they've been provided with a laptop. In terms of fully utilizing that technology, again, it's going to vary. Some teachers certainly go above and beyond, and they would love to have more technology, and some use it less so. So I think it's a valid, a valid point.
Thank you. I was asking, you know, asking you those questions because, you know, from the perspective of, you know, dealing with the limited scarce, scarce resources we have right now, we need to, you know, maximize the use of the technology we are providing.
Sure.
If the teachers who are supposed to have are not using technology to its maximum capacity, whether the level of technology we are providing is something that we don't have to provide.
Well, I mean, I think that a laptop is an absolute minimum for our teachers, because, for example, as I was mentioning, a lot of our training and a lot of, a lot of professional development is now all online. They, they have to have at least a minimum of a laptop to be able to do their job, to be able to do everything from input for their own teacher evaluations to professional development in terms of best practices, all of that is done online. So I, I think we couldn't go any less than we currently provide our teachers. It's an absolute, I think, bare minimum.
It's not just limited to hardware, I'm talking about other, you know, other software programs, you know, we are providing.
Well, we certainly provide, you know, Microsoft Office, we provide Blackboard, we provide Google Apps, which is, which is at no cost. We do provide some tools division-wide that we license division-wide so that all of our teachers have a, a minimum of capacity of, of technology tools. But I would not say that I think we were over, overdeveloping, but as Dr. Garza said, if we're looking at, at some of our instructional areas and trying to, I think we could potentially be more efficient in terms of providing some similar common tools in the instructional area, more than we are now, sort of, they're sort of campus-by-campus, school-by-school decisions as to which tools they use for some of our instructional areas.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Velkov, then Ms. Evans, then Mr. McElveen, then Ms. Smith. Mr. Velkov?
Thank you, Ms. Loveglass. So one thing that just jumped out at me was the initiative about e-commerce, going back to my PTA days. This is a huge issue for parents. So one thing I wasn't clear about was whether this system will accommodate booster clubs, PTAs, and other organizations that are associated with the schools but are not FCPS.
Yes. We currently offer a sort of a capability, minimal capability using PayPal to, for, for both department-level e-commerce applications as well as PTAs and boosters, and we provide some minimal technical expertise. But what we're doing now is we have an RFP in conjunction with Financial Services on the streets right now for more comprehensive, more higher capability of using the e-commerce, it's a little more, that will be easy, more easy, be easier for our various constituents to integrate e-commerce into their websites, whether it's boosters and sports boosters, athletic boosters, et cetera. So we do have a minimal capability, but this will be replacing the PayPal capability and providing an easier integration, so we can sort of have a standard template of here's how you integrate e-commerce. And we, for example, we've had in e-commerce, when we've had, for example, athletic fees, collecting fees online, those kinds of things, when we had the APIV fees where we implemented, then we took it away, and then we might have to implement it again. So some of those things, having a consistent contract that makes it easier for us to be more responsive when we do want to have additional e-commerce applications. So we have some of it today, but this will be a more standardized approach, which we're excited about. The RFP is still, is not closed yet, it's, this spring, we should have a solution in place.
Terrific. That sounds great. The next thing I had to do with the universal screener, and this is really not a technology issue, and I think this is for a different time, but I'm kind of curious about sort of the whole initiative.
I can give you sort of an overview of what that is, and basically, this is also an RFP that's right on the streets. We have vendor demos coming in in the next few weeks. But the idea here is to provide a, sort of a baseline screening for math and reading at the elementary level so that we can find out quickly which kids are in need for a deeper dive in terms of, of evaluation and testing. And so the idea, similar to what Dr. Garza was saying, we have different schools that have sort of used a different, different tools along the way, trying to find a, when they call it universal, meaning sort of division-wide, a base level of tool that can integrate into our student information system and some of these other things, and the idea is potentially to screen kids maybe three times a year. It's a short, the idea is a short and sweet base level screening so that then you can double those kids that do need additional diagnostic, then you can use other tools like DRA and some of those other things. So that's the idea, and we have, we've, an RFP went out a few months ago in the, in the vendor proposals, and it's, it is an Instructional Services and Special Services joint initiative. We're providing the technical piece of that, as you said. So Kim is, Dr. Dockery is here also, that if we have additional questions, she could speak to that.
I really think the whole thing's out of scope for this meeting, but I'm, I'm rather interested in sort of understanding the entire context, and as you know, Dr. Garza, I'm speaking for Ms. Hines as well.
And I can do this in two seconds.
Sure.
That came as a result of individual schools purchasing their own kind of screener and the need to have a consistent screener division-wide. So that started kind of away, number of months back. But in light of a balanced assessment framework, we really have to step back and take stock of what we're currently doing, because you can't just continue to layer assessments on top of what we're currently doing. So before we roll out any division-wide, a universal screener, we first have to develop this balanced assessment framework so that it makes sense, and that we know whatever assessments we're using, what is the purpose of those assessments? Is this a division-wide enterprise-level assessment, or is it something that rests at the campus level? So I think it's worthy that we're doing that work, but in terms of moving forward on division-wide decision, we're not ready there yet. We're a little ahead of ourselves on, on that, just yet.
Thank you. That's very helpful. I have sort of four other topics that I want to all lump together under essentially a parking lot, and it has to do with sort of strategically, this falls in a class of issues that, this is not the only part of the school system that we need to address strategically that isn't going to be done in one year. So the first topic that came to mind had to do with data centers, and I just wanted to understand what we are currently doing. So we have a data center, I forget the name of the location.
We have two data centers. Right now, we have one at Wilton Woods Center, which is a FCPS facility. It's an old elementary school. If you look at it from the outside, it looks like an old, it looks like an elementary school, and that has been around about 20 years since, since the, actually, since the 80s, and it was reconfigured for a data center. And so we do have, that's our primary data center that, a couple of years ago, did have an upgrade in terms of, it's fully generator, you know, had an electrical upgrade and whatnot, and that runs most of our, our main systems, and we'd love to have you come and take, take a look anytime. Some of, some of you have been out there, so have, have taken a tour. We'd love, because it is a kind of interesting place. Our backup data center today, we used to outsource that, but when, we currently have our backup data center at Fairfax Ridge. When we leased that facility, that was formerly used by Web Method, it's a high-tech company, and they had an existing data center in that facility. So we were able, actually, with just minimal, we had to buy some racks and things like that, were able to convert, and you, actually, it wasn't even a conversion, we were able to utilize that facility as some backups. We've put in a number of, of our backup servers over there, and we're actually able to save some resources. We converted some of our outsourced things in-house, and so that's really our, our, our primary backup data center. We do still have, we do contract out our off-site storage of tapes, of tape backups and those kind of things. So it's a mix of leased, FCPS-owned and outsourced service for, for backups.
So the naive question that comes to mind is, of course, there's a whole industry surrounding data centers, and I think it's worth raising the question whether this is something that we want to do, continue to do in-house, or whether this is something that we should be getting from somebody else.
And we have looked at that a number of times, and as I said, we, we used to outsource that, and we actually brought it in-house to save money. So we've gone back and forth a couple of times on that, and right now, we have, we continue to sort of look at the marketplace, and right now, we feel like it's, you know, very efficient where we have it, and it would be a massive undertaking to, to move it back. But we also looked at it at the time when we were considering closing Wilton Woods and moving to the, the Second Gatehouse Building, and so we did a lot of research and review with facilities in terms of looking at off-site space and data center outsourcing, and at the time, it turned out to be cheaper to do it the way we are currently doing it. But we have, over the years, a number of times, done that analysis.
And then, again, And then, again, just to the outsourcing in general, I don't need these answers right now, but I'm kind of curious about how much of our personnel budget is what I'll call sort of pure IT, people that really aren't educators, as opposed to the Sbits, who I believe they're really educators who know technology, whereas the technology people are geeks like me, right? So, while you might not have an opportunity to outsource people like Sbits, the other capabilities potentially could be outsourced. So, my point here is I think it's worth taking a look. I would like to know more about the choices that we're making about potentially outsourcing because of all the budget constraints that we're facing.
And we have done a number of those. We do outsource, we outsource a number of our applications. We outsource our hosting, obviously, we outsource our hosting of Blackboard. We outsource our hosting of MyPLT through True North Logic. We outsource FS Direct, which is our community reservation system. We also outsource Naviance Family Connection, which is our college prep application. We used to outsource our Ecart Horizon outsourcing, and we actually saved $300,000 by bringing that in-house. So, we, every time we have an application, we continually look at in-sourcing and outsourcing. And so, we have a hybrid approach today where we have some services that are housed in our data centers and some that are outsourced. And we constantly look at that, the cost benefit of in-sourcing and outsourcing that. We used to actually outsource our service desk. And we, a number of years ago, brought that in-house and we've had a huge increase in customer satisfaction because we find that having that knowledge and having our service desk folks that have both the school-based knowledge and the technical knowledge has significantly improved our customer satisfaction because they sort of know the school lingo, the school information. And we also saved a significant amount of money when we did bring that service desk in-house. We have also done with Dell, with our hardware applications, we are, all of our technicians are certified. For example, they're Dell certified, they're HP certified. And so, we have a hybrid approach also with our hardware. And so, we have found that our technicians, we've been able to cross-train them so they can repair Dell equipment. We also now have, and Dell allows us to do that work, that maintenance warranty work. Again, we, it's like a hybrid approach where we utilize Dell warranty services, but then we keep those parts in-house. Our technicians are certified so that we can have a very quick turnaround when we have hardware issues and repairs, so that we can repair them. We used to have a 42-day turnaround when we had hardware repairs. That's now much faster because we've had this hybrid approach of in-source and outsourcing. So, we do significantly look at this all the time. And I feel, quite honestly, that we have a good hybrid approach of things that are best in-house and best outsourced. Happy to look at, happy to share what we've done with you. And that's some of the things that we had. One of the things that you may be aware of is that the state of Virginia outsourced their whole IT and it was a complete disaster. The customer service satisfaction went bottomed out. They ended up not saving money as they thought they were going to save money and it was a complete nightmare. And so, I, that's a recent example that the state tried to do this, thinking they were going to save money and it was not the case. So, Texas also had a similar experience. Happy to share some of those experiences that we have done some pretty extensive research into.
And I would just add the obvious that when we look at the cost, we're looking at the fully loaded labor cost.
Absolutely.
Because it's the, you know, there is also the commitment in retirement that's being made that's factored into this.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Okay. We have six people in the queue and about 20 more minutes. Ms. Evans.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Loveglass. Thank you so much for a very thorough and excellent report. I always appreciate that. I particularly appreciate the appendix because I think that that probably shows us in pretty vivid terms some of these issues with the digital divide. You know, like Mrs. Reed, I also have, I know we all have concerns about this. And I do note that, for example, with the number of emails, email addresses of parents, that ranges everywhere from 100% down to 22%. And with the number of devices, adequate devices, that goes down as low as, I think, 52%. Are we looking at these pockets in terms of how we can deal with specific schools, with specific regions that may have more of a digital divide area? I mean, I know you've got the rollout of the Cox Plan. Are there other ways that we're looking at specific schools, at specific regions?
We do, when we do, again, we haven't had a lot of equipment money for a number of years, but when we do have equipment money, we do take a look at that. And that is a factor in terms of the poverty level and those kinds of things when we do have resources that we purchase, whether it's mobile devices and those kinds of things, to free up some of that equipment for those checkout programs. So, that is a factor. But I will say, in the last few years, just, you know, with the challenges of the budget, we have not had a lot of equipment money to really put towards it. We have also had, I mean, some of our, I know like Glasgow, for example, has had some good grants and some one-to-one pilot initiatives and those kinds of things that we've been working in there. So, we do try to focus some of those when we do have some grant money and those kinds of things towards those schools that are in higher poverty. But there hasn't been a whole lot of movement in there and I will be the first to acknowledge that. And we are certainly looking for opportunities with business partners and others to try to help us get at this because it is a big challenge.
So, those 81 schools that have the checkout programs, are we likely, are those mainly the lowest-income schools or are they all over the map?
It's a, it varies. And we're continuing to work with our schools to try to help encourage them. We've done, we've put together a lot of things to make it easier for them. We've got sort of standard operating procedures and some of these things that try to make it easy for them to implement these initiatives. So, we're continuing to work with our principal groups. We have a technology group of principals that are helping us figure out best, better ways to continue to roll these things out. And we are, so I would say it does vary in terms of those that are using it. It's not necessarily, we were trying to get all schools to do it because all schools have kids that have needs, but certainly some have more than others.
When, I see that you had surveyed parents on their internet access. How was that done? Was that done?
That was done via, first, it was done via email. And those that did not respond, then we did the telephone survey and we did the telephone survey. And all of those were done in multiple languages.
Uh-huh.
So, we did it in multiple pathways. We didn't want to bombard everybody with phone if they, because a lot of people would prefer email first. So, we kind of did it in a tiered approach. And then, we've worked with schools to try to follow up on those that we still didn't have responses from.
Okay. And I'll just raise two issues. One is that at one of my schools, they discovered that a number of the students were changing their parents' email address to their own email addresses. And I don't know if we are aware of this happening, but if we're not, we probably should be aware of it and finding some way of dealing with it. And the...
Well, certainly if there's things specifically, you know, let us know. We'd be happy to help track it down.
Do we have a method of doing that, a systematic method or is that not been raised as an issue?
Well, I mean, part of this is, I mean, there's not a specific method that we do that we'd be happy to work with the school and work with, you know, families to try to help that. There's not a specific, we're not out there monitoring everybody's email. We don't, we don't have the resources to do that nor we want to do that, but we'd be happy to help. We have specific examples.
And just one final comment then is that even though we tend to look at the overall digital divide figures, you know, I am looking at your 81% that say they both have the internet access and adequate devices. That, you know, I think we do need to realize then that that means nearly a fifth of our families don't have one or the other. So, it's more common, I think, than we even realize.
Yeah, and the adequate devices is trying to get at, you know, even if they have a computer at home, it may be shared by five kids, you know, and so, that's what the adequate thing.
And I hear that all the time, actually. People with three children, they're saying, "And I need it for work," and they need it for all this homework.
Right.
So, I think we need to be aware. It's not...
Absolutely.
That just internet access and one computer at home isn't enough these days.
Correct. That's why we sort of changed that questioning to talk about adequate, rather than do you have a computer.
Right. And I think that that's an excellent change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen, then Ms. Smith, Ms. McLaughlin, Ms. Darren Kofax, then Mrs. Schultz, and we have 15 minutes left, so.
So, Ms. Loveglass, I appreciate you doing that overview of what's happening with multimedia and media services. And I would just like to take a second because I doubt we're ever going to get them back to acknowledge the work that they've done for our system. I think coming in, you know, having never attended an awards ceremony or our leadership conferences, I was blown away with the kind of work that they've done. And I think it's sad, like, we'll be losing so many other things this year to lose that. And so, anyway, the other question I had for you, because I think this is something the community is interested in, is our door security technicians. I don't know if you know how many we actually have working in that area.
Yeah, we have, there are three, what we call, security zone technicians and three door access technicians. We have actually 217 security panels with 25,000 devices. And then, we have 182 key access system with 15,000 devices. And those, the key access are continuing to be rolled out by facilities. And so, once, when facilities rolls them out, then we take them on to support them. So, there are three of each. They are somewhat cross-trained, but, so it'll be one out of those six that will be cut. Again, it's, then it just provides, so it does still leave some that can provide that support, but again, the volume here, I think, is what's mind-boggling is that, you know, when you have almost 50,000 devices that these people are supporting. And they do break down, they do have issues, and so, they are very busy and they go out. And we do have an automated, you know, system that helps us track those tickets and whatnot so we can try to prioritize and group them by location so we best utilize our green trucks, as you know, that they go out and make sure we keep parts on so they can have a very efficient use of their time when they are out. But so, that's, it doesn't eliminate that program, but it will significantly reduce our response time to be able to keep those things up and running.
And are we at a stage now where all of our doors have the new locks?
182 schools have the door access. So, that's, as I said, continuing to be rolled out, 182 out of 200, however many schools we have.
Okay. That's good.
Yeah.
And then, just very briefly, I do want to acknowledge the work that's been done on the kits. I think that's fantastic. I hope we eventually get to the point where we have our mobile device and we can track our buses by GPS. That'd be very cool. And then, finally, having been out in the schools, I recently went out with Ms. Hines to talk with some teachers in her district. And I think we've made great progress on Ecart. There is, obviously, the initial frustration with it, I think, is slowly dissipating and teachers are really happy with the new functions we're providing through that. So, thank you for that.
Glad to hear it. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. You know, this just might be my older eyes, but you have so much great information in that appendix. And I love the iPad. I can make it bigger, but it's hard to track it so long. I don't know, and I don't know if this bothers anybody else, so this is just me saying it, if there's a way to divide up the information so it's easier to look at it in the chart because it's hard to track and see the schools. And it really is good information. So, that, and I'm throwing that out there, I don't know. So, a couple of other things, and I know we're facing these budget cuts and there's issues, but, so when I looked at page 19 of the report and it, one of the questions in the survey is classroom technologies are kept in good working condition. And I see that dropping down to the response rate being 87%. And then, when I look at page 29 in the budget cuts, and we're talking about elimination of another field services technician position. So, you know, and I think of, okay, geometry teachers like to use smart words and I'm concerned about the impact on the classroom teacher and workload and what they do to have their equipment when already we're seeing, you know, a concern in the survey about that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, a lot of this is priority and I certainly, you know, all of this, I think these cuts, as we've heard, I mean, they're going to start really hitting. I mean, it's, we've been cutting and cutting. The last round, I cut 20 people, so now we're going to cut more. And it is what it is. I mean, I think we all, we also don't want to increase class size and all these other things. So, I think it's trying to find a balance. We're also trying to find a way that we can, some of our positions, they're not vacant, but we, hopefully, we're going to have some retirements and whatnot. But we will be putting people on the street. So, it is, I think it's, these are all balanced.
And I understand that. I think it's something we're going to have to track and see what happens as we go forward.
Yes.
Okay. So, now, we're going to hit on one of my bugaboos I've had forever. On page nine of the report, it talks about the FCPs 27 learning. And it talks about 90,000 parents having accounts. And, okay, back when we first started this, I raised concerns because you have to have parents come into the schools to sign up for the accounts. And I take it we're still doing that.
We are, but we're actually looking at an alternative method for doing that. So, they only have to come in once. And it can be either when they register for kindergarten or once time, and then, once they have it, they have it forever. What is, okay, I don't know what that is. Okay. We've been looking at that in terms of trying to make, you know, part of it is a balance between verifying that the parents are who they say they are. And so, we've worked with Ann Murphy before and others about trying to find a way to validate that, because there's a lot of issues with custodial issues and all kinds of things that they have to do at once and come in and verify that they are who they say they are. But it, we've been continually looking and seeing if there's ways we can streamline that process, but...
And I guess that just, I'm going to restate my concern.
Sure.
Because when I look at that appendix and you look at the schools where parents have accounts.
Right.
And one of the high schools, I was attending their ramp meetings with the guidance counseling. And I asked, "Okay, how many of your families have this? You have these great resources, but I feel like our processes create stumbling blocks." So, yes, you want it safe, but if this is a great resource, we have to enable a way for parents to have it more. And I remember when we first rolled it out, we were focused in the upper grades. So, now, you have this option, it's in kindergarten, you can do that. But I still think we need to find a way to make it easier for parents.
You will see, you will see higher percentages at the high school level because I think, because they do have access to those college searches and some of those things that are of more interest to the higher levels. But as we're starting to do student learning plans in the middle school, we're starting to see some of that increase in terms of parent access. A lot of times in the elementary school, quite frankly, the parents go in on the kids' IDs. And there's not as much, you know, they don't have their GPAs and a lot of this more, it's not as critical that it be protected, if you will.
My point is the access point.
Sure.
So, is it how we're talking to parents about it to say, "Listen, if you don't make sure you do this now when you register your kid, you're going to have to come into the building sometime and take off work and do it."
Right.
That's my concern, that we're messaging the parents the right way about the ease of doing this. And it might not be that important to you now, but as your kid progresses through school, it's important. So, let's do the ease of access.
Sure.
And I think to some extent, that's providing more opportunity to share best practices across our division because some principals have figured out ways to make it convenient for the parents and make it accessible when they have parents there.
Right.
And so, I think it's, I think it's really about helping them think about that in different ways and providing lots of opportunity for parents to do it and make it easy for them to do it. I do think we're constantly challenged to make sure that it's, that we're providing access only to those people. But your point still, I think, very well taken. I think we have principals that have figured it out. We just need to share those ideas.
Thank you. I just have a couple more. On page 21, it has, oh, the FCPs mobile app, that Blackboard mobile app talks about the funding is going to be slated to be eliminated. I just don't know enough about it to know what's the impact of that.
Well, basically, the mobile app that Blackboard provides is okay. It's not great. We've worked with them over the years to try to improve it. It was really focused initially on the higher ed. So, some kids love it. Some kids say I can take it or leave it. We've had, it does make it easier, it's particularly easy for kids if they just want a quick, a quick access to the announcement page and whatnot. It's not really intended for you to go on and really utilize the blogs and the wikis and some of the more higher-end capabilities. It's pretty handy if you just want to take a quick check on your homework assignments, if your teachers have posted them. Staff also uses that, teachers can use that also, to post those quick announcements. So, when we were looking at budget cuts, it was kind of like, well, we, some love it, some not so much, you know, and it's one of those things, again, trying to prioritize. We certainly weren't going to eliminate our Blackboard subscription. This was, in a sense, a nice-to-have, so that's why we put it on the, on the budget cut.
Thank you.
Well, there is, there is, sorry, we are looking, we are working with Blackboard to see, right now, you can't, there wasn't really a capability to have the end user pay for it. It's a free app off, but the only way to turn it on is a district has to pay the backend licensing for it. So, they're looking at making it potentially be a paid app, which then you, but then it kind of gets back to the digital divide, and some of those can afford it and not others. They don't have a way with their new paid version to allow you to pay just for those kids in poverty. We've been, we've been working with them to see if we could just pay for those that can't afford it, and they don't currently have that capability. So, that's kind of a in-the-works process.
Thank you, that helps, because I don't know much about it. Okay, page 21, I'm sorry, page 22, the mobile app. I guess I'm surprised that there weren't more downloads of the FCPS mobile app. I know, when I go out and do PTA meetings, I'm reminding people about it, so I guess it's just a matter of talking it up.
I, I think it's a marketing, I'm, I'm like you, I was surprised there were so few downloads, so I think it's a matter of, I mean, it's free.
Right.
I use it all the time.
Right.
So, I think it's us doing a better job of marketing it. Yeah, I was thinking about that over the weekend, I thought, golly.
Yeah.
The last one is the darn Lawson thing. That's on page 23 of the report. So, is the county just, "That's it, we're on our own"? Is there any talking about, it's very frustrating.
Quite frankly, I don't, yes, but quite frankly, it's somewhat of a blessing, too, because one of the things is that we've had a lot of challenges, even with the financial piece, and being, it's working now, but we, it was not, it was, it was a struggle. And being able to make sure that we had the, the specifics that we need for, we have a lot of unique needs in terms of our human resources, being able to track all of our different kinds of contract lengths, it's fully integrated with our, we're working, it's fully integrated with, you know, things like Blackboard and all these other things that it may, it's, I don't know, it might be a blessing.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And what I, you know, this is not my forte, so when you're saying that Lawson won't be supported by the vendor by 2015, does that mean we're in the process of looking for something?
The old version.
Oh, okay, thank you.
We upgraded, because we were having upgrades, so that we're on a, we decided to sort of main, not upgrade for a while, because we were going to move to SAP, but now that we're not, definitely not moving to SAP or anytime in the next decade, we have to do the upgrade.
That's what I wasn't clear, if it was just...
It's just getting on the current version, so, and we had held off on that, we didn't want to invest in that, but now, we're going to invest in that. Sure.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin.
Before I begin my comments, I, I want to draw attention to my colleagues, again, something that I feel I have to keep repeating, and I think it's important to. We get these monitoring reports once a year. Our staff spend a significant amount of time on these reports. We've budgeted one hour for 12 school board members to have a conversation, and, and Ms. Strauss, by all means, I know as meeting manager, you were given the time, you were, but I'm asking my colleagues, since we're here in the meeting, and everybody can feel the pinch for time, can we please stop finding ourselves every single monitoring report conversation with the, "Okay, you now might have two minutes or three minutes"? That's not good work. So, I would really like, and maybe I need to present a forum topic for discussion, but Chairman Moon, I don't know if you want to weigh in on how best to do this, but I just, I get concerned about we keep doing this every time to ourselves.
I think we're close enough, just keep going, and we have two more people after you, and we'll just handle it as it goes, so go ahead and ask your questions.
I appreciate that, but since I was following your lead, which, as you just kept saying, we've got 15 more, it's 15 minutes for five people, I felt it was important to draw attention to it, because it's not the first work session that we have this problem. In terms of my questions, the first one is, I appreciate both Ms. Reed and Ms. Evans, especially raising issues on the digital divide. From listening to questions they asked, you mentioned that if they didn't respond via email about their access, then there was the follow-up with the telephone, and then also with the schools, because I, I know from the numbers you gave us, we were able to somehow reach about 69,000 of the 120,000 families. So, my concern is, if we didn't...
I left, I left one piece out. We also now have added those, that question to our emergency care card, which is, everybody submits every year.
Okay.
So, we've added that piece, so it's a, not just a one-time, we got, that's how we did to get that one-time influx of that data, and then, every year now, we do it through the emergency care card. So, then they update their phones and addresses or whatever, they also now have that question on there to update that data.
So, will that mean we'll get closer to the 120,000 families being identifying their internet access?
That's our goal, yeah, I mean, that's our goal, is to have information on everybody.
Absolutely, because if you can't know the problem until you can identify, exactly. So, one of the other things, it was on page 10, and it noted that if you take 7%, that 7% that it appears do not have the internet access, for 120,000 families, it's roughly about 8,400 families that we would suspect within the system don't have the internet access. But then, the next bullet had said, or the, the two bullets down, it talked about 685 families have been found eligible, and 338 families from 100 schools have actually then purchased the discounted broadband services through Cox?
That was the data that Cox provided us.
Okay.
So, I think that they, because we don't provide eligibility information legally, because we don't release free and reduced lunch data, so they have to basically apply, they can, basically, they accept their same application form that they would send to us for free and reduced lunch status. So, they're saying that they have sort of pre-approved them, if you will, but then, 100 of those so far have taken advantage of it, so they kind of...
But they limited also the area for which they, isn't that correct?
Well, Cox is, yeah, I mean Comcast, they're available everywhere except for Reston, which is Comcast. So, they're pretty, I mean, widely available in our area.
Right, and I, I wanted to say that I appreciate that data point in there, because I think, as a board, I didn't hear any of my colleagues raise this yet, but if we're looking at 8,400 families may not have digital access, and we now know that of the 685 that we could identify that were eligible for it, only 338 took advantage of it, it means we have a vast number of families that we know they're out there, but this wonderful program is not even putting a dent...
Well, and it's not free, so some of them have said, "Even at $10 a month, I can't afford to do it." So, that's why, I mean, it's not, it's a piece of the puzzle, I don't think it's going to answer, you're right, it's not going to answer all the issues.
Correct, but what I'm saying is, if, yeah, it, it's just a matter of having everybody understand the numbers.
Right.
Talking about, so, 8,400 families, and from what we can see, we put a dent in it with 338. So, and, again, with your department, one of the things that I saw in this report that I'm going to speak to next is, this is a, a system-wide issue. Your, your department's just one of the pieces of the puzzle, and I just appreciate you bringing this information in your report, because I think, at the board level, it's really helpful for us, working with you and Dr. Garza, to say, "Okay, here's, here's what we are seeing in the numbers." Because, again, if you don't know the numbers, then you don't know what problem you're trying to, to solve. The next thing that I wanted to talk about was, on, on page 30, you have the, the bullet on student home computer and internet access, and it basically gave a, a budget line item of about $23.9 million.
The purpose of that was just to give you a ballpark, if we were going to just, just the school system was just going to write a check and solve this problem, that's the level of funding, we're, we're not asking for that money, but we're trying to get a ballpark feel for the kind of scope that we're talking about, if we were to really address this by ourselves, without our partners.
Absolutely, and, and I'm calling out that bullet point, because I think this is part of board-level discussion with the superintendent, and also with our community stakeholders.
Right.
As you know, Scott Surville, Delegate Surville, and former school board member Tina Hohn, many of us served together on that J-COTS task force for looking at the digital access. And what I thought was interesting in that bullet point is, if we could maybe, as a next-step request, break out the cost estimate, so we could look at what would it cost in terms of addressing the 7% that need access? And then, the, the additional cost for the 18% that are saying, "We need additional devices," like, you know, which families they, they have the, the internet access, but, again, three, four, five kids all vying for one computer, because it might be that we can maybe only solve the most dire problem, or we need to target that first problem, which is being able to make sure every family's got digital access first, and then, you know, additional devices.
I have that data, so we could, as a follow-up, could get you the breakout.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That'd be great. Tying in with all of this line of questioning, again, I wanted to compliment you that what you're saying in this report was that specifically IT, instructional services and facilities and transportation are all working jointly to seek ways to address this challenge, and that's exactly right. It's going to take a system-wide approach to it. But one of the things, Dr. Garza, that I was thinking about is the fact that we've had this conversation before about community schools model. And I think that, as I listened today to this report, and we talk about how can we, you know, increase access, and how can we do it in a way that this school system and this county can fiscally achieve this as soon as possible? We've got incredible computer systems in every single one of our schools. And so, when you look at a community schools model, it could be anything from saying, "Let's look at our schools where we have the greatest need in the digital divide," and maybe that's when we really do pilot these after-school centers. And that does require facilities and transportation, because it's, maybe we rerun the buses later at those schools. But when we talk about trying to close the achievement gap, when you send children home by 3:00 in the afternoon, their families aren't getting home until 5, 6:00, or maybe even later, you know, those are key times that if we had the after-school center for kids who needed it could stay, they could get the tutoring, they could get the computer access, we, we wouldn't then have to be trying to solve it in terms of pouring more money into internet access at their homes, because we have these great computer centers right in our schools. We've got teachers who would like to enhance their income, and so, being able to extend their contract time or, you know, compensation for it, I'm just, but we're not the only school system in the U.S. facing this challenge, and I just wanted to really highlight that I think, as we look at the changing demographics of Fairfax County Public Schools, this is, to me, this time where we finally have to be very serious at saying, "Let's look at nationally the models that have, have been trying to find a way of success to it." And, so, now that, here we are in another annual monitoring report, I just wanted to put my support behind trying to say strategically, I think of your report, this is one of the most important things that we need to do moving forward before the next year's report.
Yeah, I, I do agree with Ms. McLaughlin. I think it'll come up, I think it'll be, it'll likely come up in strategic planning, because this does have to be a key issue that we wrestle with, and that is, learning doesn't stop when school day ends, and how do we provide access to students beyond the school day to ensure that they have an equal life chance, right? So, and you know how I feel about, you know, having devices and connectivity. I, I feel like we need to develop a long-range plan for how we get there, and not let it be so overwhelming that we don't at least make some headway to figuring it out.
Yeah, I don't, I don't suspect a school system of our size and complexity and magnitude could ever solve this overnight, but we've got to have a strategic plan to try moving in that direction, rather than just identifying this continued challenge, and it's going to just get to be a greater challenge. The other thing that I wanted to point out, since we were having this discussion about adequate devices within families, you know, one of the things that is very real with, as a parent, three children still in our schools, is our homework loads compound the problem. And when I look at the fact that we have children who, who especially in our advanced courses can report three to four hours of homework a night each, so then, you look at, depending on the family and their computer access, that you might need to have 12 hours of computer access, so that they can each get their homework done. We also know that developmentally, it's not ideal that students will have that kind of screen time of three or four hours every night, and so, I just wanted to kind of broaden the scope of, of this thinking. When we look at, you know, digital access, it'd be great, once we, we address that first, but even at the macro level of 120,000 families, 180,000 kids, how much screen time do we want them staring at, and is that even in their best interest developmentally? The other thing I wanted to point out to my colleagues on the FCPS mobile app, I'm going to leave tonight and actually download it, because I have not downloaded it as an FCPS parent, and I will tell you that very busy families, I try to keep up with work email, personal email, three children and their schedules, I don't have time to go look at another app to get more information. So, I'm just saying, if you're wanting a, you know, N of one case study, it's not that, it's not a great thing, but everybody's so busy, and I think that maybe if we had our principals putting out in their, their, you know, weekly or monthly, just a spotlight on this thing, and, because I agree with Dr. Garza, it's going to just take some time to make people aware of it, but do realize, it's not that people don't like it, we're just so darn busy, the thought of getting more information's going to be hard. The last thing I wanted to ask you, Ms. Loveglass, is about ISIS, if I'm asking it the right way, or, because Woodson High School's one of the pilots, and I was wondering, will you be providing the board with an update once that pilot's done, and what you found from it? You know, is there anything specific you wanted to highlight about how it's going so far at the, because Woodson's not the only pilot school, but...
Woodson was our, our high school pilot, and then, we had Irving was our middle school pilot, as I've mentioned, all the elementaries have now gone, and now, we've had a number of other, we had a pretty big group that went over winter break, and then, we have another big group going over spring break. So, it's, I'm happy to provide, you know, updates. It's, you know, we learn a lot when we have pilots, and a lot of the things we needed to have a high school was because of the scheduling and grade books, and, and we've learned a lot of things, and we've tweaked a lot of things that, that has made it a lot better before we rolled it out to the other schools, so...
And I don't know if pilot's really the right terminology. To me, it's more been, more, more a phased-in model.
Right.
Because we're trying to go system-wide to ISIS, right?
Right, so, well, yeah, exactly.
And we'll be, everyone will be on, on, on the system by beginning of next school year, is that correct?
The, we have the last, some of the last few high schools will be in the fall, but then, we'll have, yeah, we're, we're getting there, we're almost there.
And no, and I, I'm not suggesting creating more work for you to report stuff to the board, I just thought, from, from your standpoint right now, things are moving along smoothly, there's nothing really to, to give us any sort of heads up. From now, for now, it's just moving along as you'd hoped in the phase process.
Well, the next thing, just as an FYI, as a Woodson parent, the next thing we'll be piloting at, at Woodson, which will be our first pilot, is the, is the parent access to grade, so you'll be happy to have that, I'm sure.
All right, thank you for answering my questions.
Ms. Darrenette Kofax, and then Ms. Schulz.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Beth, for this report, I appreciate it. And I know you're working hard, so I just, some of these questions, I, I have to say, I'm just concerned about what we see in the budget cuts, and I know, as you as head of the department, are concerned about that, too. I remember when we put the ESPITS, you know, increased their capacity and why we did that, and my son, who's graduated, was in elementary school, I think, when we did that, and I saw a great improvement, and, you know, like you said, it's a balance, and I'm not asking, I'm just making a comment, so some of these things I'm saying today are just comments, sometimes from a parent's perspective, as well as a school board's perspective. From, from the school board perspective, I have to say, I agree with Ms. Evans and Ms. McLaughlin, that we need a long-term range plan to address the digital divide. That is one of those things that has to be addressed, and utilizing, I think, you know, this, what, what you were saying, some schools are open different times, libraries, whatever combination approach we can have, and Dr. Garza mentioned in her strategic plan, you know, that's part of the strategic plan, I think that's an absolute must, and that's, that's, that's very, very important to me, so they've addressed that as well. Mr. Moon also touched on a topic, you know, he, he gave a, a personal scenario of how his grandfather versus him versus his son used technology, and with the exception of you, Ms. Loveglass, who may be in my age range, but is, is exceptional with her technical knowledge, some of us in this age group are not, because that was not, we were not trained. And I have to say that I still do have a concern, as someone who's in the schools, someone whose children in the schools, I do not always see all of the teachers being able to use technology to the level that it is capable of. I do think some of that is, is age-indicative and education-indicative, some of the younger teachers do that, and, and that's what concerns me about, you know, but the, losing costs in budget and training costs, things like that. I think it's very, very important, and I think, again, as we get through this budget year, that's something that, you know, I'm going to ask you all to monitor carefully, because I, I see, you know, being as a parent, I saw smart boards go unutilized, I saw things that, that the teachers had that they weren't exactly certain how to use, and I think it's a training issue, and I know we haven't had funds to do that as adequately as we could or should, and I think we need to, to continue to do that. I saw on page 20, I guess it was 23, that the, the online textbooks issue, that there's less of, but I, but I'm still hearing some issues in my schools about the lack of effectiveness of the online and having error messages when kids go into them. So, my question to you there is, how are teachers reporting that? If, if a, if a child requests a, you know, saying they had too many errors, because I've heard this from a... from several parents now in my area, well, my child requested that they get the hard copy book because the online book was not working for them. How are the teachers then instructed? I would like if there was a way that the parent could say, my child requested that and we were having a problem, because I'm not always certain that the teacher is reporting that, they're just giving the book, but I don't know. So my question is to a process one.
In terms of, I mean, if a child or a parent asks for a hard copy, we provide a hard copy. We don't really, you know, there's sort of no questions asked, if you will.
Right, no, I get, that's not my question.
We do track...
Tracking that, then. What does the teacher...
In terms of textbook checkouts?
Yeah, well, does the teacher then go and report to you, we're having these problems, and we have this many students that required hard copy textbooks because of the problems we're having?
We, if they having, if...
Because...
We have, not all of them had been reporting technical issues, and we have gone out and said, if you are having, make sure you put in a Request IT ticket. Sometimes, you know, they don't necessarily want to do it if they sort of solve it themselves and just hand a hard copy. Because we do track those, and we did have a couple of vendor issues that we had, were able to go back with a vendor. We had some login issues at the beginning of the year that we were able, once we found out that they were having some challenges, we were able to resolve some of those. That they are particularly, we've had particular, you know, the kind of bumps up at the beginning of the year, when new kids, new group of kids, new group of teachers in terms of online. So we've had sets, and we do try to track them as much as we can, and that's why we have our Request IT ticket system. But I will say, not everybody reports every incident. Most of them, we've gone back out and said, please put these in so that we can go back with our vendors, and we can, you know, if we have a systematic issue that we can more easily report. And that's been much better in terms of people reporting challenges. And as I said, we've gone back with Pearson and some of our vendors, and we've made some changes that have made improvements. I mean, online textbooks are not for everybody, and some of them are much more engaging than others. I mean, and I think this is an evolving marketplace in terms of the vendors are continuing to make enhancements to their product, we're continuing to work with them. I will say that some of these textbook vendors have, do not have a good infrastructure in terms of integrating with, like, student logins and some of those things. With some of our, some of your more veteran IT vendors are much better with being able to integrate. For example, taking an upload of our student IDs and some of that kind of stuff, some vendors have done a great job and some have not. And it's an evolving process. So yes, we do track the challenges, and we've encouraged them to do those, that adequate reporting. Some have gotten better and some we're still working on.
Right.
I don't know, Derek is here from Instructional Services, and I don't know if you have any additional information, but I think it's something that we work in partnership with Instructional Services on selecting those, you know, the vendors, working with the vendors, escalating issues when we have them, trying to continue to make it an improved process.
Okay, because, well, my concern, my ask for that was because, you know, you're saying we're seeing less of them, and I'm saying, you know, I'm still hearing them, so, and I'm not, you know, so...
Sure, I'm not saying that there are no more, there are not issues.
Right, 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 right. Well, maybe we can talk offline about specifics then. And the last thing, it was just funny that Ms. Smith brought up the parent access. And again, it's kind of irony sometimes when you're a school board member who's a parent. Trying to get, trying to get my FCPS account has been, two times I've waited in lines at three different schools, for whatever reason, my account doesn't work. And, you know, and I have to say, you know, I'll, just full disclosure, then I called the number, and I had never been called back. So it's one parent, and that's why I said, I know how hard you work, and I didn't want to say that, but she brought it up. And I do think if that happened to me, I'm not unusual, it may be more of the norm, where sometimes it doesn't work when you go into the schools and you stand in line and you wait. So anything we can do for better and easier access for parents would be appreciated, because I would have never brought it up if she didn't say it, but, you know...
No, that's good to know, so A will work on that, A will work on that particular account, but...
Work on, T D, Derek, T D Kofax.
All right, thank you, Ms. Schultz, and then Ms. McLaughlin for a go-back.
Okay, so a couple of things. Ms. McLaughlin, we have a duty to get the app, because it will save time, and then you can tell all your friends that it will save parents' time. I've used it so many times already to just quickly go to a website of a school so I can call the school. It's phenomenal. So that part I'm very appreciative of, and any enhancements to it. So yes, that's a time saver. Blackboard. Parents don't use parents' accounts, parents use their kids' accounts. I mean, everybody I know, you just, you're like, what's your ID again? And you're signing in with your kid's account.
La, 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 la.
I don't know that I've ever...
That's a big security issue.
Well, you need, you need to now. I did some interfacing with kids at our Student Town Halls and through Twitter, and I'm not going to say universally, but somewhat universally, they hate, they either don't know we have a Blackboard app, or they hate it. And they keep asking, and I even had one who said, 88 out of the 100 largest school districts use Edomo, Edomo, why don't we? So, so that, that and Sakai, S-A-K-I-A-I. So, because Blackboard's like several million dollars out of our budget, right?
It's a couple million, yeah.
Yeah, it's a couple million dollars a year.
But one of the things to remember, though, is it is fully integrated, that's how we access eCart. I mean, there's a lot of other things that are integrated, it's not just for the parent-student access, we utilize it for a lot of other things, including all of our online training.
I'm just saying, we've always used Blackboard.
Sure, we did an RFP recently and renegotiated it.
The kids who are technologically savvy are telling me, it's a dinosaur, that teachers hate it, you know, blah, 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 and that it's hard to use. I'm just saying, you know, maybe this is the time where we start to explore, you know, growth, you know, merging forward. The digital divide, you know, it's not going to be a surprise, I'm going to offer a slightly different perspective. We're talking about 7% of the kids, and nobody's talked about what percentage of families don't want the Internet in their house. Because there's got to be some. I don't know how many it is, but there are families that say, nope, not going to have it, don't want it, you know, they can get what they need at school. So we're not talking about that, it's also not the school system's sole responsibility. So I'd like to know where the county is to help close this, where private sector is in terms of this. You know, you said some of the schools used grants, you know, to do the one-to-one. I think we've got to acknowledge that we do not have a singular burden in making sure every single student has the access on our budget's dime. And acknowledging that, and whether it's building a coalition or a partnership with the county, and not-for-profits in the community, or, you know, commercial entities in the private sector, the Better Business Bureau, the Chamber of Commerce, I mean, all of these, you know, to look to the school system and say, it's your job to make sure families in Fairfax County have Internet. I simply, I have a huge problem with that. And we keep spending a lot of our time talking about a very, very small population that is still not our total responsibility. And I think things like Ms. McLaughlin brought up, which is, and one complaint I do hear from students, is that the libraries close when school closes. And I don't understand that. You know, if they're staying after for a late bus, but the libraries close, what, now that's, now we're in our sphere of influence. That's something that we can choose to control that may impact our budget. But I'd like to know why our schools' libraries aren't open, what's causing them not to be open? Is this a budget thing? Is it, I mean, you know, if there's after-school programs, can't the people who are staying after school support the library being open and student access to computers? Because that would not only take care of, quote-unquote, a digital divide issue, which, by the way, I haven't seen anywhere, where's the 7%? Is the 7%, are they high school students, are they middle school students? Is it primarily elementary? Because that's a whole different ball of wax. You know, if half or more of the 7% are elementary students, is it that significant? I mean, once they get to high school, it's more significant, and then, you know, leaving the libraries open. So that, to me, is a next step, is for us to look at access of our own students to our own libraries, to our own technology and Wi-Fi to aid in student achievement. And that would also help in families that have multiple children and, you know, not, I forget what you call it.
Well, in the, on the, in the eye chart here, 90, it's 90% elementary, 93% at middle, and 95% at high school. So I mean, it is, the older the kids have more, have a higher percentage of access, so...
Right, so the bigger problem is elementary school, where it's not as big of a problem. I mean, you know, I just want to, I want us to quantify where we're spending our, talking about spending a lot of time, is let's solve what we can solve, and then let's, you know, basically outsource or partner collaborate with the entities that have a shared, a shared approach, a shared responsibility in providing access.
Ms. Schultz is correct, in a lot of major cities that have figured this out, the school system didn't do it by themselves.
Right, absolutely.
It was a city, citywide or countywide effort of leadership working together and providing hubs throughout the county. So I, we can't solve it by ourselves. I completely agree with that, your point on...
I'm trying to be very diligent and get through this. Both Mr. Moon and Ms. Smith brought up teachers' use of technology. And I will say again, when I'm spending time with students, particularly middle school and high school students, they are extraordinarily frustrated about the amount of technology that teachers are trying to use in the classroom during teaching time, during seat time, because they aren't, it's not that they're not capable, but they, you know, they're fumbling. And they feel like the time that they're trying to get, you know, an app to work, or an eCart, something to work, or a whiteboard, a smartboard to work, is taking away from instruction time. So I don't know how we approach that as a school system of integrating technology, but the kids are saying, you know what, they don't know how to use it, so it's better for them to not use it than waste time in the classroom. It's frustrating for them that the teachers don't know how to use it. So I'm just highlighting something that I'm hearing, you know, repeatedly through the Student Town Halls or otherwise. Libraries close, I was... The backup data center being at the ridge, is there any concern that there isn't more of a disparate location between the primary backup source geographically in terms of...
Well, that's why we have our, sort of, I guess our ultimate backup, is that we do completely outsource and off-site the data backups. So it's in a sense, it's a three-tiered approach. Yes, I mean, you could do it, we used, as I said, we used to contract out with a site in Pennsylvania, which we never had to use it in 30 years. So, you know, those things are a balance of cost versus, and we feel like we could restore if we had to from backup for our most critical systems, and again, those are not in either of those locations, that's a third outsourced off-site of our tape backups. Anything in terms of redundancy is a matter of cost versus trade-offs.
And the last thing I have, you said that you were cutting back on some of the videos. Two things. One, why don't we replay our school board meetings? I mean, if there are few...
We do replay them.
They replay?
Yeah, there's reruns of all of our board meetings.
It's so hard, because on that, with Cox, on the local origin, you can't ever see, like, there's no information.
The schedule is on our FCPS EDU, so we do have the schedule posted.
It's only on that PDF thing that pulls up?
The fine-tuning.
The fine-tuning, it pulls up as a PDF? Okay, I don't know if there's another way, because the only way...
Plus, we also broadcast, we also keep the archive on the web, too.
Right, that's true. But a lot of people who don't really like to watch television on their computer, so the only way you can find that is by actually uploading a PDF from our site. So I don't know if there's a better way for us to communicate what that schedule is. And then for the videos that you guys have decided to keep, was there a, like, some kind of an efficacy measure? Because I didn't see anything in the report about, okay, so we're going to keep some videos, some video delivery, and is there an efficacy measure of what we decided to cut versus what we decided to keep?
We work with Barbara Hunter in terms of the content and what's, you know, what, in terms of public information. She, you know, they sort of prioritize which things we want to publish in terms of the news hours and some of our stories and whatnot. As I, what we did prioritize, though, is keeping things, a lot of the video snippets and things like that, that we use for online learning. So that's what we did in terms of prioritization, of making sure that our multimedia sources in terms of highest priority are in those that are used in the classroom for best practices for teachers and those kind of things that we use for instruction. That's where we prioritize.
But is there some kind of, you know, when I go to, when I go and look at those on our channel or whatever, you can see how many hits they have, like, how many times they've been played? And I'm wondering if that's used at all in evaluating kind of the efficacy of the online media that we deliver? Because when I look and I see, you know, a news hour or whatever, and it's had three hits, then I think, what was the efficacy of the whole production of that video if three people have watched it?
Can you measure how many times?
We don't have, like, Nielsen ratings in terms of the Channel 21, we can't get that. We, I mean, you're talking about our YouTube video channels, so, I mean, some...
Those played on 21?
Yeah, so I'm saying, we can tell you the hits of the YouTube, but we don't have real numbers in terms of the live viewer, viewer, viewers. Cox and FIO, you know, they don't give us that granular of information in terms of, like, the Nielsen ratings for the other types of things. So we do, I mean, the news hour and the kinds of things that are, that are used, I know that we go out with Barbara Hunter's folklore, Knickerbocker and whatnot, and they go out to, they work with clusters and departments and schools to look at, and people can submit news stories and those kind of things that they'd like to highlight, so they try to provide a variety. Then they prioritize within that. I'm not sure we utilize the YouTube usage, because it doesn't give us the usage of the Channel 21, you know, live viewers, so...
Well, and I'm just going to send, as a follow-up to that library, you know, that usage issue, I'm going to send, and I guess I'll copy the board, too, I have a link to a news story about how one community used that, it was called a homework diner, and how they, and so it improved the access, and it also helped the literacy, the computer literacy of families, and then also improved student achievement. So I'm going to send that link.
That would be great. As I mentioned, our new, brand-new, two weeks ago coordinator of Library Services and Instructional Services is sitting here right in the audience today, so she heard those helpful comments.
Thank you so much.
Okay, last quick go-back from Ms. McLaughlin, then we need to move on.
One of the things, Ms. Loveglass, that we've been talking about in governance, and then we've brought up with other monitoring report work sessions, is how to streamline these monitoring reports, because it takes a lot of staff time to compile this information. And I'd like for us to really look at reporting on stuff that's essential. So the one question I had before we'll move into that portion, because I believe Ms. Smith, you'll be leading us through that, is the appendix that she referenced, the Technology Monitoring Report. Would you or Dr. Garza want to speak to, is there anything on here that you think, based it, and from your, you know, as Assistant Superintendent, could we remove and not have to, have you capturing it that is essential information at the board level to have? Because I'd like for this to be useful, but I look at it, and there just seems to be a lot of data points that I'm not even sure are essential for board members to be monitoring, but I wanted you to speak to it. If you feel like everything on here you would like to capture as a system, that's fine, but it just seems often dense.
A lot of this data we use for ourselves, but, I mean, if you all, we're happy to, we would probably, I, probably most of these things we would con... things we would continue to monitor, because we do track it and we do provide feedback to our schools and whatnot. But if you don't need it, we'd certainly be happy to not provide it in this report. So a lot of people have asked, you know, they like to see, like, the digital divide by school. A lot of these things, they like to see where their schools stack up against others. So.
I agree.
But it's not data, it's data that we capture in our inventory systems and other things. So we're not necessarily collecting this data just for you.
Okay. No, the reason I ask is I'm looking at some columns, say, like copiers, data projectors, document cameras. Again, as Ms. Smith pointed out, it's so small that unless I'm looking at this where I can enhance it, but I just, so everything you mentioned, to me, that is the, the point of what's essential information that helps us as a system. But I don't know that I need anything on copiers. But that's why I was just wondering. The second thing I meant to ask earlier was, I finally discovered after being a Fairfax County parent for 13 years now, that if I want to find any documents, reports, policies, regulations, whatever, I have to use Google Search Engine to find it on the FCPS website. And I wondered if you could speak to if there's any reason why we can't have our own FCPS search engine work? Because when I go to the FCPS site and I try to search these things, I cannot tell you how difficult it is to find it. And I'm happy to use the Google Search Engine, but I'm thinking about all 120,000 families that they have to try and discover that's the way to finally find this stuff on our website?
I mean, yes. The reality is, we've looked at, at implementing document management systems and some of those kind of things, which are, that, which can be very expensive. And so it's a matter of prioritizing what you want to upgrade in terms of your, on your web presence. And we just hasn't reached the level of priority for, you know, all the other things that we're doing, quite frankly. And so. I, I use the Google Search also. And if you do, you know, FCPS Google Search, I mean, if you put FCPS in the Google Search string, it works pretty well. And so the reality is, if we can do it that way, is it really that a high priority for us to implement those capabilities inside our system when you have sort of commercially available tools to help you do that? So.
Well, and I think you hit on the, the key point that I was trying to capture, which is, I agree with you. If we, if we've got a commercial entity and it's not going to cost us millions of dollars to fix, but Dr. Garza, if I, if I'm at the level I am in this school system involvement and it takes me this long to discover, oh, that's how I can find things on our school system's website, then I think we need a PR campaign to be telling our families, here is the simplest, easiest way to find any information you want, because it is there and it's fantastic. But if you don't know, you've got to use Google to find it. Because it, you, your automatic thinking process is, go to that website and use their own search engine. And so I just think we, we really need to be thinking about that, because it is difficult to find things unless you've discovered that Google Engine is the key to finding the information.
Let us return to the motion that is on the table, that is to accept the Technology Operational Expectations Monitoring Report made by Mr. McAveen, seconded by Mr. Velkoff. All those in favor? The motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.
[inaudible]
Excuse me? Yes, Mr. Stark absent, I'm sorry. And next steps, very quickly? And I'm, yes, was there any, all right? Any next steps, Dr. Garza?
Yes, I have three.
All right.
First, is further breakdown of costs regarding student home computer and internet access of $23.9 million. I believe it was on page 22, if we wanted to add that. Second, provide a report on the implementation of ISIS to see where we are. I think there was a request for that as well. And then develop a strategy for providing access to our libraries and computer labs before and after school.
Okay. Is that satisfactory?
Did I miss anything?
I don't think so. Mr. McAveen?
I mean, can we give more direction on the second one? I'm not sure what more we're looking for than was, what was in this report.
Yeah. I, I think, because I had asked for it, I don't really need Ms. Loveglass to provide a report to us on the implementation of ISIS. I just thought it would be helpful before we roll out, as you described, into September with all our schools. It might just be helpful to get an update on, is everything, you know, going along smoothly? Or is there anything you thought you should alert the board prior to that phasing in?
The way in which I would have handled that is just had Mary Beth write a, write a little, a couple paragraphs, and we would have put it in the superintendent update. But, but we'll take that offline and just make a note of it.
Okay. All right. Ms. Darrenette Kofax?
Use my mic. For the third one, we talked about, you know, it in a strategic way. Could we, could we add in other potential community partners? You know, people talked about other funding sources from chambers, things like that. Yes. That would be fine.
Yes, just as a sidebar, the Northern Virginia Technology Council has always partnered with us with this, and they are important in that arena. Okay? Is that it? Thank you very much. Then this section of the work session is closed. Thank you very much.